All right, I'll call this Town of Centerville Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Budget Workshop Session to Order. We'll begin with our typical citizens forum. We ask that citizens keep their comments to three minutes or less. Anybody out there? There being none, we'll move into our discussion. For the folks dialing in from home or watching this later on QAC TV's website, we have a slide up that we just want to kind of pitch to here real quick that I put together with our Finance Officers Assistance, Karen Lufman, who's seated to my right. So these are the things that are decision points between now and the end of the budget workshop cycle. So to be very clear, this is not a list of everything that we need to approve or cover this evening, but just to kind of keep us on track. And then our agendas formally in front of us, paperwise, basically have the same information. The one item on there to draw attention to is Item C, Health Insurance. We have slated specifically for the April Fourth meeting. So otherwise, we will take these as they come. And based on the discussion we have tonight, where we have consensus and agreement, to the extent that we feel comfortable making certain decisions, then I would recommend that we do that. And those things that obviously we as a council feel we should wait for additional input or discussion, then by all means. So that being said, we'll begin with department budgets, both operating and capital.
All right, you good if I take over?
Yes, I'm going to defer to our Finance Officer, again Karen Lufman. And she's going to help facilitate walking us through the packets that we have and the various decision points. So over to you. Thank you.
All right, so the, for everybody, all different, Gary, you all were able to print your own packets. I printed for council. What's in the binder is what we're going to go through tonight. The very first page you'll see is the list of changes from the last work session. There was none, no decisions made on our part at the work session, but there were a few things that Crystal noted for me to update. And so those things are listed on the front page, and that's the differences between last week's and this week's. All right, so we want to go to page two, or the next page, which would be the summaries. Oh, I thought you needed me.
No.
Sorry.
I think Eric opened his thing right when you said it, and I didn't know what page number he said.
I'm very good with my timing.
So the first and second page of the operating budget in your attachment is just the summary pages. These detail just basically what each department is, what the revenues are, what the expenses are, and then the bottom line, what we can transfer to fund balance. The current budget we have now would have a transfer to fund balance in the general fund of $118,282 on page one. And then page two, a transfer to fund balance in the enterprise fund of $37,963. These two summary pages are also inclusive of the capital projects that we discussed last week, and we can discuss again this week, but they already are inclusive with these numbers.
And do I understand that on the 404 meeting, we'll talk about the fund balance?
Yes.
And where it stands and how it's evolved?
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
No problem. All right, the first page five, oh wait, my eyes are bad, sorry. Three, four, and five, or three and four are the operating revenue budgets for the general ledger. Did anybody want to go in detail on them or have any discussion? Jim, I know you weren't here, so I don't know if you had anything specific.
No, the, I was amused at, under license and permits, forty-four thirty, the activity so far this fiscal year was off the charts compared to budgeted and prior actuals.
And it's, you know, when I did pull up the activity, it was for one quarter thus far, so there certainly could be more that came in, but I was very surprised too.
Yes.
Much higher than normal, but.
And that comes to us from the state and really don't know what generated that.
Right. They don't send us a breakdown, they just send us an OSVPI, which is the way they post all their payments to us. They send us one payment through the bank from theirs to ours. There's not a breakdown. Now, I'm sure we could call and ask and see what I could get.
I like where your head, I think, is at. And I think that would be a nice inquiry to just understand. And then to be able to look at that to say, okay, so if this is anomaly this year for this particular reason.
Right, what brought that on?
So be it. But if that's the direction we're going to be trending in, great, so.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll take more. All right. Any other revenue questions?
I have none.
So I would say let's go to page five. We can start going department by department. Last week, we did go through these in detail. We didn't discuss any increases. The three of you were here. Are we at a point where you think we could go department by department and approve if there's no anomalies or questions that aren't answered?
I don't have any questions on page five.
So A ten is your legislative budget, which is the council's budget. The only increase for the fiscal year was due to MML dues. They go up every year. So if there was no questions, Carolyn, with the three of them, are they allowed to make the decision to say this one's okay and we'll move to the next one?
I think, yeah, you can say everything's okay. There can't be like a vote on.
Right.
You can do consensus on things.
Right.
But, yeah.
Or a Q and A session, right?
Yes. Or are there any questions noted on any of the line items?
None for me, though.
All right. Page six will take us to planning and zoning. The only increase you'll see this year for the fiscal year is the increase in fees from MDIA. And those are accounted for in a seventy-seven-four forty MDIA. Any specific questions for planning and zoning?
Just the QA TV line, that is not these meetings. It's just the planning and planning commission meetings. Is that right?
Yes, and so what it was, we had put it in the budget last year with the thought, we tried to do it. Carolyn had reached out and they were unable to, right?
Yeah, it's the same night as the Board of Ed meetings. They weren't able to do it.
So obviously, we won't use that budget this year, and then we didn't budget for it next fiscal year.
Thank you for that.
The planning commission's not very upset about this.
No.
They're not very upset.
That works.
I don't think they want to be on TV.
There you go.
All right, page seven, A eighty-one. This is our one oh five North Liberty Building. The increases you see are just based in valuation and then infrastructure projected repair costs. So the property tax valuation when the increase is, so does the property tax along with. We have no offices in that building, so we pay full tax on that building.
And you do have a capital project associated with this as well?
We absolutely do, yes.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, any questions?
I'm on page seven.
All right, page eight and nine, A ninety-two. I'm sure some discussion will come in here. The few increases we see are salaries, the addition of a possible administrative assistant, a possible HR administrator, and a possible public information officer. The YMCA membership cost for employees has also been added in to the budget. The software line, which you see includes our Accufund Cloud, our muni billing utility system, our CBIZ HR system, and Inacom, which is our contract for IT support. We did increase that a little bit based on the usage so far this year. And the fourth would be the purchase of new equipment for the positions. So is there any discussion for A ninety-two?
Just a quick question. Where does our grant writer fall in this?
She falls in, so the grant writer, the lady who we work with to help us write federal, you'll see her under A ninety-two.
Track services professional fees?
Seventy-four forty, and then GRNT.
Okay. Oh, there it is. I'm sorry. It's right in front of me.
Yeah, no, no worries.
He did a reduction to that because she helps Tanya a little bit, but not, not at a twenty-eight thousand dollar level.
Yes.
So we just kept some in there for.
You can see where we're at this year.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's in there for that. So I would say, I guess, the first discussion point would be the discussion of possible new positions. The justifications for each position were put in the back of your supplemental tab. I'm hoping you had a little bit of time to review. And so I will, before we go into it, I'll address the HR administrative position. Carolyn and Crystal and I have met. We are bringing in a new CHR system for the HR. We're, so we're hoping this will make things more efficient. And we're thinking at a later date, we can reassess this position. But right now, we think we might possibly be able to, I'm trying to think, what was the word I used? Can you remember the word I used? How allow, you know, in, I think we can.
Try to manage with.
With what we have in-house.
For now, until we can evaluate.
We'll post more consideration on this.
Yes.
Not in this budget.
Right. And so we don't want to take it away forever. It's, the need's there, but we feel like we can address it.
Have better feel for it once you get associated with it.
Yep.
Familiar with the new software.
Yes.
Makes sense.
And if it's able to streamline some of the processes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sounds good.
So that's our thought process on that position. We'd still like to have discussion on the admin assistant and the public information officer. Ashley did bring up at the last meeting that the possibility of contracting out the PIO. So if you wanted to discuss that while we're here, since Eric and Jim were out. Or had any questions for Carolyn on the administrative position or the PIO?
You want to just take them one by one?
I would think that a PIO should have more ongoing familiarity. I'm not familiar with that profession, but I would think it would be valuable for that person to be more in-house than a contractor that you call up. But that's my instinct, not necessarily my.
I think it's similar to a lobbyist, you know, that they would understand, you know, they would have to get a grasp of what we do, but.
Yeah.
Being here all the time, you know, it's a matter of, you know, I guess we would send them rough things and they would clean it up and make it presentable.
Yeah.
A lot depends on what we want to task them to do. Do we want them to take care of our Facebook page, you know, or just send out news releases?
Right.
Or the meeting summaries, or, you know, you know.
In my experience with these positions, when they have been contracted out of house, is that if you lead in with the right candidate, that you want to understand what their experience has been in organizations that might be transitioning to over time and in-house PIO. Then, and kind of look at their pedigree of what they've done. That's important. But based on my understanding of kind of where we've been in the last even decade, I think getting somebody, if we do this right, that has that background and can help us get the basic nuts and bolts in place and certain compliance and emergency reporting, that sort of thing, that that person could help us grow that position over time.
Yeah, I didn't think it needed to be a full-time position internally, per se. But I just wondered about the disconnect between an outside consultant versus day-to-day activities and familiarity with what's going on. So maybe integration with another position or something. I don't know.
And I'll just say, I'm biased in this. My, so my disclosure or disclaimer here is that I come from the healthcare background. And just my experience was there were some interesting biases, or biases, excuse me, that were not real welcome with the folks that were in-house. And the ones that I just personally enjoyed more were sort of geographically separated and much more academic in their approach, which helps because it takes the emotion out of it. So not that we always are going to be dealing with emotional issues for the PIO. We don't seem to function that way as a town, thanks to the people sitting here and you, and maybe a little bit of us up here, but definitely you. Anyway.
Good point.
There's a good point I hadn't thought about.
We hire somebody, it's a little harder to get rid of somebody where, so we contract it out. We can always change our mind and say, oh, maybe we should bring this in-house. It's not quite working out, you know.
Maybe like a test for the first year, you know.
If you can find someone.
Just see the need and the number of hours.
Right, see what works out.
It's really a firm, you know. Yeah, really trying, you know, I guess we don't, I don't think we want the situation that we had like with, with the, you know, with not so, what's it Sony inspection?
Code enforcement?
Yeah, code enforcement, you know, that, you know, that's an individual. But in this case, we're looking for a firm that would perform the service, you know, much like we do with, you know, the attorney.
Inspections or anything like that.
And to me, this is the perfect candidate for an MML inquiry to say, hey, what other municipalities?
How do they ready to do it?
Have experience, and maybe we could tap into an existing contract and just kind of tag on. So, because I know a lot of municipalities, especially here on the shore, can't afford a full-time PIO, so how are they doing it?
If I can go to another topic on here, the salary and benefits line items, as shown in the budget, are aggregated. And it's hard for me to reconcile that against the supplemental information on the prospective new hires. Because those are, those numbers are shown in aggregate, and it's hard to get them to tie into this. And these aggregate numbers, I don't know how much of that is deltas from last year on a.
Right, differences and.
There's a way to, I don't mean to put work on you, but if there's a way to summarize it so we can understand, you know, last year's number, here's where there was money savings on a same person-to-person or job-to-job position or an increase from last year. Here's what new hires would add, one, two, three, in each of these line items, so we can sort of understand. Like the pension number jumps wildly, and I understand some of that is related to the possibility of new hires, but I don't know how much of that, and.
Right.
Yeah.
Just a little table schedule. If y'all put that together, that'd be great.
So that's the one thing that I have been managing with. Essentially, HR system has a position management. Whereas it wasn't as, yeah, it'll be more detailed. It'll have that ability to assist me in putting that information together when Karen and I work on budget. So hopefully, the, the next budget.
The numbers are here.
Right.
They're just not assembled where I can figure out what's going on.
The unaggregated.
All the detail is here, it's just not in a, in a table that I can really track.
The tracking has been manual. So it's, but with the central HR system, that software will, will allow a little bit easier to track.
So if maybe if you saw the breakdown of the salary last year and what got us close to, or into the seven eighty-six as opposed to a breakdown of this year, what gets us to the nine thirty-six, and then you can see the differences, if there were changes in people and.
Well, for instance, the one hundred sixty-four thousand dollar difference here, there's probably four different components to that number.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
New hires, change in existing, da-da-da, you know.
Yep.
And I just, I can't, unless I start developing a spreadsheet of my own, which.
You're very good at.
Well, I think it's also.
I thought y'all would be much more adept at doing that.
So you want, I'm just making sure I understand you. Like the nine thirty-six number, you want that broken out, what's included in that number? Is that what you're?
When you're saying nine thirty-six, where's that one?
You're talking about the salary.
That's why you're looking, look at the binder one, this one.
Ah, I'm sorry, I'm still on this one.
No, that's, and that was one that changes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was one of the changes.
All right.
So it's nine thirty-six, three fifteen now, but yeah. So you want to see a spreadsheet.
And how that reconciles to the one sixty-four delta, or whatever the new number is, one sixty-something.
One forty-nine delta.
What the cause of the deltas are, really.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The components of those deltas.
And I agree, the easiest way to illustrate that would be unaggregated. So if it's an existing position, what's the delta, and maybe a column that allows for a couple of words. What's the explanation there? Anything new, that sort of thing.
And, you know, we did have a transition in employees too, that may be making different salaries than the previous. You know, those are sort of the things that.
I don't need it person by person. You know, we don't need to get into personal information at this point. But looking at it at aggregate, just so I can reconcile the numbers.
Okay.
And for instance, I know that for health insurance, you've explained to me that you used the biggest possible number on a projected new hire.
Yes.
Which throws the aggregate number off and makes me scream.
Yes, when you look at the previous.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, understanding that in the numbers, and it's not just for us right here, but a document that lives next year and next year. So then we look back and say, oh, I see what happened.
Exactly. Crystal, we can work together if you want.
I can't, I can't imagine a council moving forward that would not benefit from that level of information. So, absolutely.
All right, did you guys want to also discuss the administrative assistant position request for A ninety-two?
I'm okay with that because we need to train someone to replace someone who.
And I will tell you, the position itself, so there, at some point in the year, there'll be a transition from somebody to the finance department. But this is still a third position, even with the transition needed for it. And so Carolyn put the justification together in the back, and we discussed it pretty in-depth last week, so, you know.
It sounds like you're already kind of shorthanded up there anyway, so, at least a half a person, so, yeah, right.
Eric, any questions?
I guess I always want to hear when we talk about adding, what amount of time do we think some of these positions will be focused on doing what couldn't be done because we didn't have enough labor, if you will? And then what level of automation is now being folded in? Because in other areas of the budget, we might be talking about software that helps in that area. So just to kind of understand, you know, we're maximizing use of time directly from an individual that is either on a team already or that we want to add, and, you know, where are we automating where helpful? I know Chip used to say, you know, I don't always want to hear, or I don't want people to think that if we purchase really awesome software, that that replaces the fact that we have folks that can't keep up with some of the requirements we have regulatory-wise, et cetera, reporting-wise. So just, just want to kind of understand for any of these ads, any thoughts on those sort of two areas? And where some of these folks may be focused, if I can't tell from the position itself, and I did read those. But, you know, how much are each of these ads leaning on some of the software that we are potentially proposing or folding in?
Well, the administrative assistant really isn't gonna, any of the software is not really affecting our front office. Muni billing will because it's just a new software program for our utility billing. My initial thought for this position is really to focus on the customers and training as well. Because there's a, so building permits and meeting minutes, planning commission, board of, well, not necessarily board of appeals, but park advisory board, cemetery, they can't get done. And then, you know. they can't get done, and then, you know, their Betty Gina Norma are staying after, you know, or on the weekends doing their minutes, because, you know, so it's, there needs to be some, just another person there to help with phones and people coming in. We're still in the midst of trying to get our plans and everything scanned in. We're at the point now where we're going to have to start pulling them from our storage unit that we have where they're stored over, and start scanning in, so it's also includes that. It's just a very busy office out front, and not a lot of time to be able to sit down and focus on something for an hour or so, and there just, there just needs to be another, another hand out there.
And I guess the additional follow-on, based on what you just said question, would be, in cases where we have great software and folks are so overwhelmed that they can't use it, because I've done there.
For all the great things that it could have, you know.
Yeah, and so, to be able to add that additional layer of detail, that hey, if we put this in, and now this, we've got staff that may not have to stay evenings, weekends.
Overtime.
And they can actually start helping us with data management through this tool, that kind of thing. I just, I just always want to understand the domino effects that are created potentially negatively, and you guys do a great job explaining that, but what are sort of the unintentional positive consequences of that?
And I do, I mean, not that this, the, I always forget the name of it, the, Brightly, which is one of the software programs that were, the asset management that we were talking about, more than likely, they will be involved in it, I don't know that it's, I don't know the impact at this point, because it's really just putting in information when we first start, so, but it's got possibilities of work orders and, you know, so they would be involved in that, but I don't know at this point how much that would veer away from manual emails or phone calls or, you know.
And I don't want to belabor this particular topic, but just, just stuff that I think is in my head, and I'm sure a few others up here, as we look at, you know, making the tough decisions, because we're, we're the ones that when we're in the grocery store, somebody's going to grab and say, so I saw you just added three more staff to the town, and, you know, what, so, you know, all the information that we can have in our hip pocket to help sort of feel very justified in what we do. And I think this particular one, and this is the sense I've gotten, I did have an opportunity to talk to our council president by phone to kind of catch up on the last workshop, and some of her, her thoughts. So I've gotten the impression, and I guess I'll just ask for a straw poll real quick on the A92 administrative assistant, is there anybody that really has strong feelings against that at this point?
Not here. You have room in John Hall for them?
We used to have three people out front. It was a part-time position when I first started with the town, so they were, yeah, where the desk used to be, we'll have to do a little rearranging, but, yeah.
Okay, so then, why don't we look at A92, human resources specialist?
Well, that's the one we decided we're going to pull back this year.
Pull back this year, that's right.
We're hoping to be able to reassess it and maybe possibly the next budget year, to see what we can handle with what we already have.
Thank you for that.
Currently, yeah.
Appreciate that, the handler that you are up here.
And can I ask, what was the consensus with the PIO? I know we can look into some other municipalities to see what they do, was there more of a consensus for contracting it?
I'm fine with that.
I think this one is absolutely critical, and I know time has been spent, not just in this process, but in certain events, the chief is intimately aware of council concerns and community experiences, and not to discount the great work that you've done, obviously, so I'm not here to say that that's the problem, but this is an easy way to make somebody accountable for the whole picture. And then, obviously, if it's a law enforcement scenario, and they're going to be dealing with you and the town manager, but functionally, whoever's affected. So I'm very, very thrilled when I, when I saw that folks were really getting their arms around this one, and as I indicated earlier, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I think having an outside personality to start is perfect, and I strongly encourage us to go through MML to just see what folks are using here on the eastern shore. I just would further add that Beth Malaski is one of the best PIOs I have ever worked with, and I've worked with probably, just doing the rough math, 150, 200 in my time. So she's the county's PIO, and so I don't think it hurts to just say, hey, this is what we're thinking about doing.
I already have. I already, yeah, I already reached out to Beth and just said, I was, she actually helped us with the justification, so I said, can you help us, like, I'm not, I don't, I don't know the lingo and what's, you know, so she, she, well, actually, her first words were, I am so happy to hear this.
I bet that she would be willing, when we narrowed down some candidates, to be part of a phone interview, to just give her thoughts, because she could probably smell right away somebody that is real good at the information base of things.
Right, right.
So, all right.
All right, so, after discussion of positions, does anybody have any discussion on the YMCA membership firm, please?
I will say that when the memo requesting this a few months ago was presented, I was not a fan, and I see it in the budget here, and I'm wondering if there's a different approach to this, sort of a trial balloon, maybe seeing which employees would want to sign up, and maybe subsidize 50% of it for those that want to sign up, just to see what volume we get, maybe a year later, see if they're still engaged or not, I don't know how we want to see how much is being used, but...
And I'll just give you a little summary, just sort, so the 12936 is the full access for employees and family, it's not inclusive of the 15% discount that we would get on top of it for the police department. Crystal, anything else, I just want to make sure they have all the information for the...
Right, yeah, I mean, it was definitely an estimate based on, like...
Full capacity, like if everybody...
The full census.
Right.
How many employees are there that would, that would fall under this, how many?
Um, 40, well, sorry, not including council, 36.
We're back in this tab, right? I apologize.
Yeah, I kind of like the idea that the employees contribute something to it, I don't know, it's 50% or whatever, but usually if you have some skin in the game, you're more likely to take advantage of it, I mean, people might say, yeah, I'll do that, but never do it.
Right.
If you put some, if they have to put in a little money, I think they more likely use it.
Is that something that could be managed through the payroll system, or would that be not, not workable?
More of a deduction.
That would be a question for Karen or Ashley, I think with payroll.
We can definitely do payroll deductions.
Okay.
And we wouldn't pay, so the full, you know...
Or a payroll add as a subsidy, if you're paying it, I don't, you'll, you'll figure out the best way to do it.
Yeah, and so that, you know, the 129 would be if all people, you know, but if eight people signed up, then it wouldn't be 12930, you know, so it wouldn't be 12936 if six people said, I'm going to do it, and nobody else did.
Well, it must be do like a reimbursement thing, where they pay for it, and then they bring their bill paid receipt, and we reimburse them for...
Oh, I'd rather take out a paycheck.
Yeah, I don't want an employee to be out of pocket.
I don't want to think about that.
Yeah, no, I know, it's one of the myriad ways to do this, but I...
And, you know, so, no, you don't have to make a formal decision tonight, I just wanted to open it for discussion, when hopefully if all five are here next week, we could put some stamps down on some of these. I just wanted to kind of go through it a little bit.
With that concept, y'all can think about how it might work best, and...
Yeah, and, and Crystal has the tiers.
Contributed to the conversation last time.
And well, and I was going to say, I mean, Jackie brought up a good point, is that the YMCA can provide me with a report, an activity report of...
Oh, excellent.
You know, who has attended, you know, or who has, you know, come to the gym this month, or what is the quarterly report of activity?
Yeah.
Right.
So that way we can see.
And I, I don't want to, so I'm real hesitant with what I'm about to say, but I'm just going to go with my gut and, and say it. I don't want to encourage this process to be too convoluted and difficult, but there, I've been part of a few health systems where they created this sort of pyramid of just different benefits, that the more the staff get involved and do this, other benefits emerge. So if you attend so many sessions per month or less, then what's taken out of your pay is taken out of your pay, and if you're in that next tier, you might get some of that back, or it goes into a fund for employee morale, there's just different ways. So again, I'm not necessarily suggesting that we jump into this and redo everything and come up with this really complicated way, but just, I think it's, it's a huge thing in and of itself to offer this, but to be able to sort of say, look, if you, if you go all the time, and without, you know, infringing on the time you're supposed to be working, obviously, but if you're going all the time, we know that you're going to be a better worker, you're going to be less of a financial burden on our health insurance policies, so there's all the right reasons to do it, but then let's, let's take it even a step further, and, you know, so I just encourage you, that may not be this year, it may be something that as we get real comfortable with the relationship with the Y, that, and as you look at different models out there, or we stumble across things, I've just seen some really cool ways to do it, and then, I don't know how recently you've seen the county's wellness card, like the bingo card.
Yeah, right, it's like the travel around.
Correct, so I just think something like that, that, because I got, we got real competitive, and I remember like looking at people's desks and seeing theirs, and I was like, oh, you're not going to get ahead of me, and like I went out and did stuff just because I'm competitive as hell, but, anyway, enough of that.
So I can certainly send out a survey to get employee engagement on, I mean, if that, for interest, I mean, I've already had employees contact me who have been watching the meetings, and they're saying, have they said anything yet about the YMCA, like, is there, so I know there's interest, but as far as having a data-driven...
Yeah, I suggest let's flesh out some structure first, so that they know what they're answering, what questions they're answering. Does that make sense?
And I have done these, so I don't want to ever jump in on the town's operational stuff day-to-day, but I would be happy to look at that questionnaire before it goes out, to just see if there's anything else we might want to throw in, and then, I couldn't tell what you said, but it sounded really good.
My apologies.
No, no, it's okay.
Because I'm glad that Crystal had been looking into it at some point, I don't know what the result was, if there was any benefits through our healthcare, if we had a wellness program, or something of that nature, that would reduce the cost of healthcare.
And to Councilman Beecham's point, exactly, having the data to then be able to go to them to say, look, you know, and then the trending, you know, as people started learning about it, and this dude who used to miss work because he was sick all the time, doesn't seem to be sick anymore, and what's, what would happen? Well, I've been going to the gym, and I feel great, and so I think it's going to create a domino effect of participation and interest, and it's not all going to happen the first year, so I would encourage council and staff to not pass judgment on the first year's participation, that's what I've seen in every program.
Do it more like a three to five-year trend examination.
Yes.
Because, and, and to answer your question, I did get, you know, there is no, like, well, there is a reduced cost, it would be the premiums, would, you know, it would be based on the trend history, if people are not as sick, if they're living more healthier lifestyles, and the claims and the cost of claims reduce, then our premium, overall premium cost will reduce.
Yes.
So...
Or a better surplus.
That's pretty much what the, the cost savings is, or the benefit of having a wellness, you know, program, so, you know, that is definitely something I tried years ago, and working on reigniting this year, and having the assistance of Connect Care 3, one of our benefit groups, and so...
And, and clearly, if we get to a point where we do a wellness scorecard, something like that, and there's these graduated incentives, you know, one of those things could be, who sort of maximize their gym membership the most, and I wouldn't want to mention any names, but, so I won't say Lieutenant Laramore could be kind of in that.
Whatever, it's on now.
Anyway, I think we beat that horse dead. So as of right now, just, just a quick straw poll, no one has strong feelings against pursuing the YMCA package as it is, as it stands, but with the understanding that we want metrics, we want to look at the options for having a sort of payroll deduction of some sort.
And we'll get the, Crystal has the memo with the tiers, so we can send them out for, so next week's discussion can be more evaluated based on the numbers in her memo and such, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'm kind of against a corporate membership, to answer your question more directly. But I, I understand the value to it, and would like to find a more creative way and equitable way to handle it.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, so, I think that wraps up A92, unless any other questions? No, okay. All right, let's go to page 10, the police department, you'll see overall the budget decreased, and that's, you know, based on the reduction in the pension and such, but the couple increases you see are based on a spending average over the last three years, so we went with trend. We added a new K9 expense line, which is the second line on page 10, to track the K9 expenses better, and some IAPO and Lexipol software for the police department. So Hobbs could answer any questions, if there is any at this point, on the budget?
One question I have is, based on the state of Maryland's Police Accountability Act, and the compliance for that, that we acutely were aware of, that we were right up against when things were rolling out, and the state still hadn't released guidelines, so now that we're even further out from that, are you getting a sense that there are staffing or other burdens that are now in place that we need to be thinking about to maintain compliance with things, or is it really such a minor kind of part of your world at this point?
I think we're in a good position as we are right now. The only thing that's really truly affected us is, and is one of the things we discussed in the last meeting, was making sure our policies and procedures are tightened up, given the recent transitions with law, things have been put into effect, reforms, et cetera. Those need to be tightened up a little bit, and that is one of the things that the Lexipol software that is requested in the capital budget would give us. They're, they're basically an oversight agency that would take our policies and procedures, bring them up to date, up to par, they monitor the law, so anything, any changes in the law, they inform us immediately, they'll make the changes in our policy, we're, so we're in compliance, so it's almost a set and forget it type thing, but that is really the only thing, as far as police reform, transparency, things that we're looking to kind of get up to par on right now.
And I appreciate you underscoring that, because that software has my absolute support, because I think if we can automate this, and it's automatically going to keep those policies up to date, because that's what's going to bite us when we have an investigation, is, well, your policy, you could have done, your officers could have done the best thing in the world, but if our policies say that we don't do this, or we don't do that, and we're not compliant, that's what's going to get us.
Well, the reduction in liability is truly the big thing that we're looking at here in the...
Yes.
...team of things, and where we're doing right by our constituents and our community, but, I mean, this is keeping us up to date. The one good thing I will say about this particular company is, when a law changes, they don't just send it to us to put into policy, they also give us a training module, so we can send it out to our officers, they can go through a series of questions, answer the questions, they can provide some type of training, so they have some type of understanding of what has been taking place, what changes have been made. So it's a learning experience as well for everybody, so...
I didn't have any, I don't know about anybody else, any other questions or comments for the...
There's, there's some meaningful swings here, I don't want to challenge them, but I just would like to better understand what's driving them, you know, the salary swing, it's kind of noise in the big picture, but just understand what's causing that. Pension expense was a pretty wild swing, and the health insurance was a pretty meaningful swing, and, again, I don't want to challenge them, I just want to understand them, so similar to what we talked about with administration.
And if you don't mind me tagging on a question, it would be, do we have sort of a financial trigger, or otherwise, that says, okay, that means we should be adding a police officer versus paying as much in overtime, so...
And so the, I will just get a quick overview, the difference you see in salary this year would be based on the baked-in step, based on your review and COLA, mid-year COLA, so that's the difference that you see there. The reduction in the pension expense is based on the state, when they bill, they go on calendar year, where we budget on a fiscal year, and so, and they're also a calendar year behind, and so the differences on the number of staff is usually where you see those changes. Crystal, if I'm missing anything, go ahead and jump in.
The state retirement calculation, yeah, so they, they do the, their calculation based on the previous, it's almost like the June of, so for this fiscal year, the, the payment, or the premium payment was based on June of 2023, last pay period, what were the staff? So it's, it's all based on personnel, change over, and it's always a year behind with the premium rates.
So it's not just, again, it's not just for me understanding what's going on now here, but, you know, we're looking at four years of trend line, and to have those footnotes tracked through, so that three years from now, somebody looks back and see, wow, can you save $90,000? You know, you can, the explanation is there, if we're all gone, the explanation still lives.
And I, I'll certainly, you know, work with Karen, because I do have the spreadsheets for me, when I'm having to manage the premiums, what's estimated, what we've, what was actually... for me when I'm having to manage the premiums, what's estimated, what we've, what was actually paid. And I try to keep track for every insurance. So I'll certainly work with Karen to see how we can come up with a.
The footnotes and the supplementals have been great. Been very helpful on everything.
All right, any other police department questions? All right, page 12 is the goodwill fire. I don't think there were any questions last time. Unless you guys that weren't here last week had any questions.
I'm good.
Okay. Page 13 is the streets department. The increase in line items overall of 77,000 was a lot was based on either trend analysis or in, you know, the increase in the cost of supplies to get the things that are needed. And Gary and Jackie are here if you guys had any specific questions.
Was also where you were moving from the water department and wastewater department into streets?
Yes.
That bumped these numbers up a lot.
Absolutely.
When the counterparts went down. And there again, footnotes should be really helpful. It wasn't until you explained that to me that I thought, what is going on here?
And I do have that note for when I reprint the budget.
Good, thank you.
I'll get with Jackie because I think we did the uniforms, we did the travel and lodging, we did the training, we took everything out of C21, 24 and put it in C11 where all the personnel were actually located.
Can we talk about the 20 jump in the safety and education training? I apologize if I missed that already.
And so. And that's the.
I'm sorry, it is.
It's safety education training. Yeah, and so that.
7140, yes, sorry.
That's the footnote I'm missing, but it'll be on your next one. It's where we removed, so we used to split all those lines between streets, water and sewer. Now that there are no employees in water and sewer, we took the budget out of that. So you'll see a reduction on the enterprise side and we put it where all employees were actually funded from, which is the street side. So I'll add a footnote for the next printout.
Thank you.
No other questions from me.
All right.
More from me here. Anything from you, Councilman?
Snuck in, Jack.
All right, page 15, C22, landfill services. The only difference would be increase in the contract cost. These are contracts we already have and we collect the revenue based on the contract cost. So it's a, we're not earning money, we're just breaking even from, you know, able to pay the services, so.
And our current contract, we extended for a year, do I remember that?
We didn't.
Was it an option or something?
Yeah.
We have a one more one-year option. And I know, I don't know if you were in on the conversation or if we talked about, we originally talked about going out for bid again for this year. We stepped back on that because they have the one-year, this is the last one-year extension. So if we went out to bid, we didn't get any bids in or if we got bids in that were away and we wanted to stay with who we are, they also have the option to not renew with us. So we didn't want to be put in that position of them saying, well, you bid out and nope, we're done and, or we don't get any bids and they don't want to do the extension. So we said, we'll just wait.
So we're going to bid it during the last option year?
Next year, we will.
You probably remember that was a painful, painful process.
Well, it's, that first time, yes. Because we were trying to figure out automated, semi-automated, you know, that kind. So we've got all that streamlined in the language, so, and we, we bid out before and we ended up choosing them again. You know, it's, the RFP is pretty streamlined now.
Okay. Good.
No, we're not going to wait too long into the year.
All right, page 16, parks department. The increase, as you'll see, is 7,500 increase in the street decorations to replace some of the older things we have and then an increase in the contract costs related to landscaping. Anybody have any questions on the parks?
Do we have some sort of breakout of what, how that $7,500 increase came about? That number, is there something behind it?
So when we all met with the department heads, we went through the book, Jackie actually had a book of some of the street decorations.
I knew you'd ask him back.
And the costs. And a lot of the cost, you know, for one piece was $2,000 to $3,000. And so we, you know, we're not like trying to, yeah.
We're in the wrong business.
Yeah.
So whoever wants to do that.
It was quite expensive. And so we thought if we could add two or three pieces this year to try to, you know, without killing the budget and trying to go really high, but.
I had wondered if this is an, it sounds like you're talking about establishing a new trend.
Yes.
Where I was wondering, okay, if this is a one-shot deal, we're going to buy a bunch of decorations, maybe we should make it capital.
Oh.
Because it's a one-time expense.
And I would think it's probably not going to be a one-time, at least until we can catch up, because they're in some really bad.
Our decorations are very old and decrepit.
Falling apart and.
And fall apart. Watch those age comments.
So the intent would be to try to.
I'll remember that.
They're well-seasoned. They're well-seasoned decorations.
There we go. All right, well, if we're establishing a new plateau, that's one thing, okay.
And that's the intent, at least for a few years, to just try to get it to where we were even maybe 10 years ago where.
And from a public scrutiny standpoint, this to me is the perfect medium because I like where your head's at with looking at the capital investment option and doing something much broader. But knowing that the community is sort of equally positioned for why have you not done something better with the decorations over here? And if we spend $5 on it, then we're being irresponsible. So I feel like this is a nice, just my opinion, happy medium there. And so if we kind of.
Well, this can be the kind of trap that gets you into, you know, a structural deficit.
Yes.
Where you have something that just repeats in the operating budget instead of recognizing that 5,000, 7,500 is a one-time and we're just going to increase it on a sustainable basis at 2,500 a year. So think through, if you would.
In each year.
And even if it's just three years, we should probably have it in CapEx for three years as sort of one-time things. So we don't wind up with this big structural number and then have it wave up and down every three or four years, it'd be kind of crazy. So it's just a matter of the presentation so that the budget makes sense. Thank you.
All right, any other parks questions? All right, page 17, Main Street. This is Carol's budget. It doesn't really change much. She usually has the same expense line for every year that comes around and her revenue, she took on a new grant this year, I know for the Coag Main Street Improvement Grant. And I want to say that's one that she expects to receive for a few years. So she added me to, asked me to add it to the list. So anybody have any Main Street questions? Okay. H60 is the cemetery. Again, the only increase you'll see here is the increase in the landscaping contract and the cost for Chesapeake burial. Any questions?
The Chesapeake burial is a variable cost, right? Where you really don't know until.
Just depends on how many, how do you say that?
How much activity?
Yes, yeah. I'm like, how do you say that? But yes.
That was good.
Appreciate it. All right, H90, watershed. The only increase you see here is the street sweeper equipment replacement, to try to get some new sweeper brushes for the street sweeper as they're in need. Yep. All right. Page 20 and 21 is just the water and sewer revenue. The only difference you'll see here would be the 5% increase that's approved annually per the resolution. And other than that, there isn't any changes except there's no water and sewer allocation fees budgeted, just depending on how the plant goes over the next few years will determine that, so.
And I just have a comment here that is a more broad, kind of taking a step back and looking a little bit more long-term. I continue to have concerns about the wonderful things the county is doing with new buildings, things like that. And I just keep wondering, what is that going to look like? Are we, and I'm adding this to my list of suggested sort of do-outs from this meeting, what are they thinking is going to happen if they, you know, build a new county office building and the health department's there? You know, they retain that building. So do they already have something in mind there? And so, you know, over the next five to 10 years, as the county builds new buildings, if the Department of Corrections moves out to Eastern Penitentiary, I doubt we're going to have another correctional facility there. I don't know that we're all going to be jumping up and down for somebody to come to do that. So that would be an example of where if somebody actually made an interesting suggestion for the old, the jail to be like an incubator site and work with Chesapeake College for new businesses, well, if something like that happened, and I'm just thinking out loud, now we're talking about probably an exponentially lower amount of water consumption than as a residential jail facility. So, but we've got the health department, we've got all these other buildings that are potentially going to be, I don't want to say abandoned, but repurposed. And so what, what does that look like as we trim that out over the next five to 10 years? And, because we're already at capacity, right, for water and sewer? So I've been, not losing a lot of sleep, but this has popped up a couple of times when I've been thinking about the budget and just kind of thinking, you know, these great things that are happening and the ground being broken right across from the Vincent Building, this has gotten me anxious, so.
We all think about that and we get anxious all the time, especially with the plant, so.
And then I'm hoping that we can talk them into bringing some non-government agencies in there, non nonprofits, for-profits that we can actually charge for certain things. So anyway, that's a whole other conversation, but I know that's not water, so forgive me for getting a little tangential here.
Yeah, you're good. All right, so we'll go to page 22, which would be the sewer department expense budget. The overall increase, well, overall, there's not an increase based on the reduction in allocations to 5%, but on the regular expense line, the overall increase is 60,000 and that's attributed to the increase in the chemical costs and then year two wastewater treatment plant operations, Susquehanna's contract increase.
So just for reference, this 7140, you can see the minus 10,000 here that got moved to streets department.
So you're on page 22.
So that really isn't a cost savings, it was just a cost transfer.
Thank you. I couldn't find it, thank you.
When we looked at the $20,000 bump before, there's 10 of it right there.
Yep.
Got it.
What is the deal with the, is 47,000 under 7010 salaries? That's.
So that's there for the ARPA-funded project manager position.
Right.
It's my way of tracking so that I can reimburse the enterprise fund from ARPA funds.
Okay.
So that's why.
Okay.
So what will happen to that when the ARPA funding?
So the current ARPA funding for that position ends this fiscal year. And so we, Carolyn and I.
3:30?
Yeah, for, that you guys approved. So if we approved any, you know, we would need to discuss. So Carolyn and I just had, started having the conversation on the best way to bring it to you for if you wanted an extension of those services, ARPA-funded, regular position, those sort of things.
So that would be an added position to the overall budget?
Correct.
Because right now, you're saying you've got a credit to offset this?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and that's just through this fiscal year, so, you know.
Through 24.
I thought it was in halfway through.
Goes through December, I mean.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, goes through December.
The contract is what we have to.
Contract, yes, it's the contract.
February 2025.
No, thanks, I'll look through my notes. I think December's right.
In any event, half of the 47 for FY '25 is covered and the other half is not.
All of it's covered by ARPA. The other half is on C24. It's split between the two budgets, if that.
Okay, but it goes through, okay.
Oh, I see what you mean.
This budget will have half covered because the money ends, let's just say it ends 1231.
Yes.
We'll have half of it reimbursed and the other half won't be reimbursed.
Correct, unless we contract it before December 31. Obligate, so a new contract is what they say. So you can continue the costs, but it has to be not only obligated, but within contract. So you have to have a contract.
By the end of the year.
And then you can spend it through December of 26.
Got it.
But it has to be in a contract. So right now, yes, based on the current way we are, we can fund it through December unless we renew the contract.
So if we do renew the contract after this budget's all buttoned up, that will be a savings.
Absolutely.
Because this budget is showing six months of ARPA funding against 12 months of personnel expense.
Yes.
Okay.
Very good question.
All right, any other sewer department questions? All right, page 24 is the water department.
There's the other 10,000.
There's the other, yep. The overall increase here is really, is mostly the Susquehanna year two treatment plant operations, which was the increase in their contract. You'll also see in the uniform and clothing, there was 2888 removed. That's another piece that went to the C11. There was just a couple of the lines that went together. The travel expense and convention line, 4,000 and 4,000 at the bottom of the page were moved to the C11 as well. All right, and the final page of the operating budget is the farm. And you'll see the biggest increase here and, you know, when we sat down and went through as department heads, we have always had to do a budget amendment at the end of the year for the farm because we're never budgeting enough. And so we sat down with Gary and Jackie this year and talked about some of the equipment that hasn't had repairs, that is in need of repairs, that we haven't done for years. And so that's why you'll see the bigger increase in the budget from 24 to 25 is based on the equipment repairs that really need to be done.
And I know we.
In contract services?
Yes.
And I know we keep foot stomping this, but I just don't think we can do it enough. That would be a perfect candidate for footnotes for, you know, future councils to understand.
Yep.
Yeah, because contract service doesn't sound like equipment repair at first glance.
Exactly.
Gotcha. All right, so that's the end of the operating budget. If all five are here next week, I'd like to just go department by department budget and see if we can hone down or approve any as already are.
So let me say, I've probably sat through eight budgets in my now third term on council, interrupted for a couple of years. I think everyone here should feel really good about the work they've put in as measured by the discussion that we have. I mean, there's really nothing to discuss because it's a great budget. All of you have really done a great job with this and, you know, there's a few questions, but it's not challenges. It's just helped me understand, it's not, I don't like this.
And we're not sitting here saying, can you explain this? And 100 times we're hearing, I'm going to research that and get back to you. Everybody is ready and willing.
Well, thank you all.
Yes, let me echo that. All right, so we covered department budgets.
Yeah, and so the next two pages will be highlighted in green, and this is just the capital budget. I'm a council member.
That's okay.
Okay. We weren't here last week, so if we just kind of want to do a quick overview to let you know what they are and see if you had any questions on the specific capital. The first page is the general fund capital budget. The first line you'll see is A81, which is for the 105 North Liberty Building. Quite a few of us did a tour of the place recently. You know, this is the place we ran out, we have residents that live in there. And so they have some water damage, some leaking roof, some repairs that have not been done in quite a few years. And so that's what you'll see in the 25 budget for this. Since inception, we have netted approximately 600,000 from the building, so it's not losing money. And so I think getting some of these repairs done are definitely a necessity.
That is one that I did have a question on, which would be, what else remains? So is that number based on, this is what we think we can ask for this year, but really there's still another $200,000 worth of work that needs to be done at that building that we should be thinking about, you know, year two, three out?
That, right, what we're asking for is a good starting point. It kind of, with the roof and the chimney leaking and all that, it's kind of like as of right now. I mean, other than that, it's got good bones. It's just that if we don't work on it soon, it won't be good.
Exactly. Okay.
We're hoping we can manage a few fixes with this budget to, you know, get it in a better position, make it look a little nicer, you know, just give it some street appeal. So. All right, A92, the first thing you'll see is the classing, classification and compensation study for 25,000. Crystal, you want to give a little detail, just basically reviewing of.
Right, so, excuse me, about four years ago, I conducted internal classification and compensation study, me as one person. I pretty much had to stay home and, and work on it for a few weeks. I, I do highly recommend, after talking with a lot of other municipality, HR directors, HR managers, even just county level, no matter how small we are, it's always a good idea to have a professional company, neutral company coming in, not only doing compensation evaluation, but job description review, audit, and just to ensure that, you know, compliance with the job descriptions, that they're properly classified, doing compensation study with all the different positions, so it would be for all employees. I just feel that I can do it, but then other tasks will be fallen behind too late. And when I manage, when I have to work on claims for workers' comp or disability or, you know, anything of that nature, those take precedence. And so I just feel that it's, it would be valuable for, to staff, to have an agency do it to at least set a good foundation. These types of studies don't ever really have to be done until another five, six years. So it would just be really nice to have a good foundation to start from.
And the vendor that you are thinking about is somebody that you have, that you feel good about?
I, it was recommended, I actually reached out to three different agencies, and these were all recommended by other HR directors, managers from like City of Annapolis or City of College Park. I've reached out to the county just to get an idea of, you know, who they've used in the past and were they happy with them. And so I did a, you know, a three vendor, a three third-party quote.
Awesome.
Just to get an idea of what their proposals offered.
And while I would never speak for our council president, if she were here, I, I would think that this would be music to her ears, of course, because she is so passionate about just where we are with our compensation and, and making it more equitable. I know there was a hearty discussion about that, I did see the video. So that has my full support, just as a footnote.
I looked through the pages in the back, and it looks like we've got a little over 15 classifications that we're actually using on our folks. I don't know if it was worthwhile to target, like just public works this year, just admin next year, if there's some economies to that, or if there are ones that may not need review because it's functioning really well? I mean, the team that you, that we have in place, I say you, you collectively, the team that we have in place, pretty good tenure right now, I think. Not a lot of turnover, so you all must be doing something right.
Yeah. In fact, that was going to be my question, was do we, do we isolate a department that has the greatest turnover, folks are leaving for jobs that pay more, et cetera?
Yeah.
But we don't seem to really have a problem in any particular area.
I know earlier, the police department had an issue where bringing in rookies, training them, then they'd go somewhere else.
Yeah.
After we trained them, right? But do you see that now, or are you getting more stability?
We're definitely have more stability than we have in the past years.
Yeah.
The turnover is, is due to probably more competition amongst the agencies, somebody's getting paid more or offering more money or benefits. But now, I don't see that as much. We're, we're pretty much trying to stay and maintain what other agencies are, are size and stature.
And forgive me, chief, what was the program that we bought into finally years ago for law enforcement?
Leops.
Leops, thank you.
The retirement.
Didn't that help start a process of stabilization there?
Well, a huge benefit, I mean, one of which we're very grateful for, because looking at bringing somebody from another agency that might be wanting to come to our town to serve, they're able to bring their time with them and, and still continue in their retirement phase, you know, without losing any time.
Exactly.
Huge benefit on our behalf.
And just to kind of speak on, again, on the comp and class study, I, I don't believe we've ever had one done by an agency.
Really? I don't think so.
I don't think so. I've never found any documentation, so that's one of the things where if we can at least do it once, get a good foundation, because it's, it's not, not so, I mean, definitely to enhance, you know, employees, or at least, but it's, for me, it's a compliance. It's ensuring that we are properly, have like a good foundation with it, because when I try to look at the job descriptions, you know, going through each class, it, I would be doing that around the clock, you know, just to kind of stay on top of the, it's almost like a police vehicle rotation, you know, every two years. It would be constant. And so having at least a good starter point with a good foundation, working with a professional company who has a staff of five or six individuals that I would be working with to do the, the evaluation would be greatly beneficial, so that moving forward, I'll be able to maintain.
And this is a real good selling point, I think, for our recruiting portfolio of stuff, to say, you know what, we hadn't done one, but we just did one, we, our commitment to folks that are exploring careers with the town is, this is something that we do regularly now and.
Well, and actually, and also just to have it coming from a neutral, an outside agency, there's, you know, and, yes, with my job, I can honestly look into if there's a reclassification needed, I can do the, I can figure that part out. But when it comes to, when there are so many job descriptions that need to be updated, it's, it's, it's a daunting task.
Just a quick time check, pulse check here, we, we have about 20 minutes until our regular council session, so we can obviously continue, but just to manage expectations here on what we have remaining.
All right, so the next two things you'll see are the ESRI GIS system and the Brightly Asset Management System. They are split between four departments, if you separate water and sewer. You were given a description tonight that's listed as ESRI and Brightly because we, last week, wanted to gather more information so we could have a better understanding of what the system is.
As I hand out, yeah.
Yep, and Carolyn, did you have anything you wanted to discuss on that, you know, or just that's enough information if they, if you guys want to review it and then we can look at it next week if that's.
Yeah, if you want to review it, or, go ahead.
So what other than, what data layers, other than what the county has in their GIS system, do we, what are we targeting for? Utility lines?
Utility lines, streets.
Clean out, storm drains.
Everything, we're trying to get it out of everybody's head and get it on paper for the next day.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot here. I run into it all the time, whether it's my head, Kip's brain, Conley's, anybody. We all know a certain thing about the town the other one don't, and we're trying to get to the point where we're, we're all on the same page. It, because when I first started, there was a lot of the times that you were like, what, what, where is this? What, you know what I mean?
And one person knew what it was.
Yes, you have to pick, say something happens in the middle of the night and you need to know how, like, for Laura's Row, for instance, we had a leak there this morning. I knew where the valves were, but the one guy that came in to look at it to see what was actually going on, he didn't, so he'd had to call me. If we'd have this app, then he could just go right there and say, here's the valve, this is the size, this is how many turns.
Well, I get the value of it, I'm just wondering what all we're going to be able to add. Is Delmarva going to cooperate with us and let us put their information on as well? You know, the new, what's the new cable company or whatever they are, the fiber company?
Okay.
Yeah, we should get their information on there, so you guys don't hit their fiber accidentally.
Right.
We want to call them. So, yeah, all these layers would be very nice to have.
And, and on that note, just, just because I'm remembering it, Jim and I have expressed interest in maybe with the connections you have and others, maybe linking up with some executives from Delmarva Power, and so maybe this is an opportunity to kind of jump, bundle a few topics into a discussion like that. So I, I want to reiterate my interest in that, if we, we can maybe jump on that, not today, but, you know, in the, in the upcoming future.
Probably things like the recycled containers.
Yes.
They're just, they're all assigned per property, so having that layer in there too will help at some point, right?
I'm thrilled, this is music to my ears.
All right, next would be the Police Department budget. You'll see two vehicles, as if like a replacement, so we wanted to get to where we were replacing two every year, so they didn't go beyond the seven-year term.
What are we doing with our, our old ones?
As we discussed in other council meetings, we had sold the other ones, taken the revenue from new sales and put back into.
And last week, I pulled the, I think this year, year we've sold almost 10 grand, and last year we sold a little over eight grand. So I was trying to bring those numbers in so you guys could at least see the ones that were.
Does that have a unique GL number?
It's in the B-10 miscellaneous revenue, 5850.
Okay.
If you don't mind pulling out your crystal ball, chief, when you think about vehicles of the future, is there anything that you sense is coming down the pike that, wow, if they think that that's going to start being a requirement for law enforcement, that's going to add 20 grand to each vehicle we have to buy moving forward? Do you see anything like that out there that we need?
Blue lights. That's what we're all thinking, isn't it?
Exactly, yeah, like.
I will definitely keep my eye on the trends.
Yeah, just your thoughts when those things pop up, you know, it's good to have and we'll add it to the footnotes.
Is that a new requirement, the full-time blue lights that we're seeing out on the highway sometimes?
That is more of an attention getter to let them know that the police are in the area. It was supposed to be more of a crime deterrent or one to assist a citizen if they need police assistance. There's, there's a police officer right there, we can see the lights, we can make contact with them. So it's kind of served twofold. Whether deterred or not, I mean, that's, I don't know. I can honestly say that the, the crime rate, as far as like when we're present and we have those lights on, seems to have lowered in, so it might quite possibly be a deterrent.
Thank you.
All right, next item would be the ballistic vest for the replacement program, the LexiPo system, which he was talking about earlier with the policies, the asset management software, which is a part of the, the Brightly overview packet you have, portable radios as part of their replacement program, and then the Axon body cameras. So right now, they have no spares, this would give them two spares, like if one broke, somebody would just be without. Anybody have any questions on the Police Department capital?
I guess they're not giving away the cameras anymore like they used to.
I wish.
Legit used to give us money for them, but they, they don't do that anymore either, so.
I am curious, does the county bill us, bill us for any portion of the radio programming that they do?
So that's an excellent question. I have been in conversation with Tony Claire from the county. I believe the county does get a reduction in cost if we go through them and utilize them as a purchasing point. So I'm comparing prices as to what I would get outright versus going through the county, and I think the county is obviously the, the cheaper price point.
Good to know, thank you.
But ultimately, right now, just so the council knows, our portable radios are now 12 years old, and Motorola is saying they're no longer going to produce parts for replacement for them. So that's why we've got to start looking into more of a replacement.
So just looking at this number then, right now, you said the 14 grand is 7K each for two radios. Are you asking us to anticipate a minimum of 14K a year to kind of do a two every year for the next?
It's a start.
Okay.
Because obviously with inflation, the prices are going to change every year.
Understood.
But to start off, we'd like to get two radios in to replace the ones we have because they're in dire straits. So that's a start, yes.
Thank you. Axon cameras.
All right.
Sitting at one. Two spares to allow us that type of oversight.
I would just like to add a footnote there that if there's any way that one can be purchased to have a backup sooner rather than later, rather than awaiting the end of this budget cycle, if the council indulges, I just, I, I just heard a real big vulnerability, and I would hate to see us wait so many more months to address having at least one extra. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but if, if there's no camera, then it didn't happen, what your folks say.
Well, it's even to the point.
Essentially.
I wear one, when I'm, because I'm out on the street assisting as well. So ultimately, we had a call not long ago where the officer's camera went down, I actually gave him mine. So I was without, so probably not as big of a deal, but at least the officer had one who would be out there, you know.
Without objection from the council, is that something that we can take offline to?
We just buy both of them.
Yeah, you're right, I mean, we're not talking about much, so.
A lot of money.
So can we, between finance and Police Department, and then obviously Carolyn with your, your endorsement and feedback, I, I just, I don't want to see us wait on that.
I bet if you look back at his department expenses, he's underspent on some things where it would easily fit in.
You're right.
I don't think you have a separate line item for body cams, but I think in.
Operating supplies, maybe.
Your supplies and expenses, you've only spent like 8,000 this year against a 17 budget, something like that. So you've got room.
And then if, you know, we, we can come back to the end of the year if he requires a budget amendment for that process.
Well, let's, we'll go on record right now that we're, all of us here are for moving forward now on that.
Yeah.
And that you've got the room to do that, so.
Take them off of here, put them in this current year that we're in.
That's the cameras?
Yes.
Then you should, I think we should put it in the budget to replace so many a year too.
Yeah, so I guess my, my vote, unless you say differently.
They're probably around just like radios.
Yeah, go ahead and get them now, but keep, maybe keep two in for a cyclical.
Yes.
Replacement plan.
So two now and two in.
Yes.
Go ahead and have the budget line.
Right now, we have no backup, so.
Yes.
And then we can adjust it each year, how many spares you have each year, we can then adjust the capital.
They are so new, I mean, they've only been in circulation for the last maybe five years, and they, they're doing very well, they're, they're in really good shape, but ultimately, they probably should be in a rotation.
Because the technology is probably going to improve too.
Will they change?
Yeah, exactly.
All righty.
Just about the 10-minute mark, so if we can go maybe five more minutes and give us just a couple of minutes between.
Yep, and I should be able to get through the last, you know.
What is on-call pay?
So the on-call pay is to allow, so the Streets Department can offer a flat rate $250 for the week, for each person that, for one person to be on-call. Gives them, you know, right now, they have one volunteer sometimes, you can't get everybody that wants to do it, and so if you have an, an on-call pay, it at least gives them incentive, like I can't go out, I can't drink, I can't, you know, there's an incentive to do that, and then a volunteer, more people were likely to volunteer. So this would be 13,000, it would pay 250 to one person per week for the 52 weeks of the.
Different, and different people it rotates.
Yes.
And legally, we should be paid if we are restricting them from, you know, going and doing other activities.
Right, yeah.
Because they have to be required to report if, if they're being called in for that week that they're assigned.
And I know it's more of an operating, I wanted to just show it separately this year because we have never done it.
I was about to say, this is kind of the opposite of the decorations.
Yes.
This is something that you want to sustain, you probably should put in the operating budget.
And that's, my plan was to move it from here on out, I just, because we've never done it before, we wanted you, y'all to be able to make the approval for it.
Okay, but you're going to put it in the OpEx?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, the next thing is the Batwing mower, it's for the Farm, but it'll be used for the Streets Department, possibly at the cemetery and other locations, so you'll see it split between the two, total of 30,000, 15 for each, and the slide-in salt spreader for the back of the, the truck for 12,000. So a total general fund capital budget of 362147, that number's in the summary sheet, already inclusive of the, in the black budget you have received. And then the next page would be the enterprise side of this capital budget.
The utilities line items are bits and pieces that we've already discussed, right?
Yeah, some of them are, yes.
So just a few, just a few new ones on here.
Just a few new.
Let me ask this then, would you touch on the new ones, and then we'll just invite council too, if there's any other comments, so hopefully we can at least get through this tonight, and then we'll, we'll pause.
So the new ones, the utility rate study, it's split between water and sewer, we're just looking at getting a better structure for the customer and more of an actual, you know, the fixed rates for the water and sewer and an actual usage per gallon instead of paying a minimum of 6,000 gallons.
Santa Claus got my letter.
We're not looking to increase revenue, we're looking to better distribute it, more fairly distribute the burden to the citizens, okay?
To the ones that are using them, you know what I mean?
Right.
If you're not, you're using less than 6,000, you shouldn't have to pay a minimum bill of 6,000. And so this will better help a customer be for actual uses, yeah. And so that's what we hope to get with that.
If you're listening at home, we, we have paid attention.
The utility rate study will just help us continue to receive the same level of revenues or not losing any.
So probably six years ago, we lowered that minimum from 10,000 to 6,000.
Yeah.
With an effort to encourage conservation. And right now, if I remember my numbers correctly, about a third of the customers.
Yep.
are, fit under that.
Yep.
So, what is the sweet spot? For how many customers fit under that minimum threshold where you start into variable pay?
Yep. All right, the geo locator is just the equipment that they'll use to see the stuff underground, correct? And the fire hydrant replacement program, this is one kit, one in every year, just to be able to replace one as they age. And under the farm, the only new one would be the spray irrigation system improvements. Again, we haven't been able to update or upgrade a lot of these in the last few years, this will help us catch up on some of those.
Right.
So, 218,700 in the enterprise fund, it is inclusive of the summary budget, and hopefully, next week, when we meet, we can kind of hone in and do some approvals if all five are here and okay with that.
That sounds good. I think you've done a phenomenal job. Our finance department is always in each department. Just a couple do-outs that I caught, you know, one of the important things, the HR positions with some additional non-aggregated detail, data collection for the Y program, more equitable options than a true corporate model, explore graduated incentives, add footnotes for future councils on those wilder swings, which you guys are doing, but keep it coming, keep the supplemental information coming. We're going to spend some time on ARPA opportunities, that's something I'm just suggesting, you and I talked about that, and then, just continuing to work with the county on what's going on with the buildings they're going to leave behind with the new stuff. And we're going to talk about the fund balance on 4-4, as Councilman Beecham mentioned, and...
Along with the ARPA.
Yes, and then, think through holiday decorations, the plateau of operating versus capital investment, kind of look at that a little bit more. So, that's what I captured, I'm sure there's other stuff, but thank you all. We'll go into our second remaining closed session, or excuse me, closed session, citizens' forum. Citizens are requested to keep their comments three minutes or less. Do we have anybody present that would like to speak at this time? All right, there being none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this budget work session.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
And we will reconvene. Good evening, I want to call our town council meeting of March 21st, 2024 to order. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for military and public safety personnel, past and present.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we jump in, I just want to say something on a personal note. The moment of silence always means the world to me, as I know it does to everybody here. I came home from Afghanistan with a couple service-connected issues that have been kicking my butt lately, so had a little bit of an unexpected absence, it's good to be back, but I just wanted to say thank you to the staff, the council, and to the public for all the prayers and well wishes that helped me get back, and they were heartfelt, so thank you. We will jump in with a review of minutes from the past meeting, March 7th. Has everyone had a chance to read those? And is there any?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 7th town council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. We'll jump right into our citizens forum, would you go ahead, or, who's reading that tonight, or, yes?
We need to vote.
Our town clerk. I'm looking at Carolyn, and I should be looking at you. Thank you.
Yes, I am, and it's over here.
That's okay, go right ahead.
Welcome to this meeting of the Centerville Town Council. This is a public meeting, and we welcome your participation. By attending, you acknowledge that this session is recorded and aired live on QAC TV 7. During the meeting, we ask that you turn your cellphones off and hold personal conversations outside the meeting room. The scheduled agenda is available on the information table just outside. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per person. The town council respects and appreciates your desire and right to convey your message freely, and in keeping with the dignity of proceedings, we ask that all views be expressed in a respectful and civil manner. Comments longer than three minutes should be submitted in writing. If questions are a part of your comments, we will refer those to the appropriate individual. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have anybody present tonight that would like to speak for the first citizens forum? Okay, there being none, we'll go ahead and move into our new business section, and we'll begin by looking at ordinance 02-2024, rezoning map 40 for F, parcel 60, Providence at Centerville. And so, you have that in front of you.
Sharon, do you want me, you want to?
Sure. So, at your last meeting, you had the resolution that would annex this property, and this is the ordinance that applies zoning to it to go with it. So, this would need to be referred to the planning commission along with that annexation for them to make a recommendation, and then, we'll go ahead and we'll schedule public hearings for you all after they do that.
So, are we looking this evening to have an endorsement to go ahead and refer this to the planning commission as presented?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any, are there any comments, any discussion? There being none, do we need to do a motion to do that, or can we do that by consensus?
I mean, a motion couldn't hurt.
Doesn't hurt, yeah, I'll entertain a motion at this time to refer this to the planning commission for action.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye heard all, so we won't do a voice or named roll call. Anybody abstaining? And I didn't hear that either, so, anyway, so we'll proceed accordingly. Resolution 08, 2024, revised fee schedule.
This is, we received a fee schedule update for Middle Department Inspection Agency, who is, they're the ones who do our inspections for building permits, so they have increased their fees, and since they're on our fee schedule, we did include their, their fee change. We made one change, and this really just came about for the very first time, like a few weeks ago, a permit revision that we included in there as a fee for, we had somebody who came back like a year later and needed a revision to their, and MDIA does charge a fee as well to do that, so, that's, those are the only changes.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I hear all ayes, so this is passed. All right. We will move on now to section seven of the agenda, reports of boards and commissions, and we'll begin with Maryland Municipal League.
MML is hosting a Smart Growth Summit. The title, Smart Growth From Here Towards a Sustainable and Equitable Maryland, it's on May 2nd, 2024. It's an all-day affair from 9:00 to 5:30, I can forward this to anyone that's in, I'll just forward it to all of you.
Yeah, that would be great.
And Carolyn, maybe you can forward it to the planning commission members, there's probably more in their wheelhouse. Great, I'll send that to you.
Where's this, so it be at him?
It will be in Annapolis on Jennifer Road.
All right.
Round Plaza.
Anything else for MML?
No.
All right, council of governments.
I got a couple things. The Queen Anne's County works on a hazard mitigation plan, as you probably know, Eric.
Yes.
But we can come up with our own, or we can piggyback off of theirs, and we decided to piggyback off theirs, correct?
Yes. I think that's an excellent, excellent suggestion.
Sixteen months to write one, so, so, we're going to piggyback off of theirs. And also, the county met with Shore Health Systems, and they're going to, it's a, they're going to try to start the new hospital by 2025. It's a $500 million job project, and it's $50 million in just infrastructure, because they got to redo a road, reroute a road, and I do believe Queen Anne's County is giving $5 million to the project. I think that's all I have for the county.
Where will that be, please?
You know where the COVID community center is? I do believe it's behind there, or beside it, somewhere.
Right by there.
Yeah, right by the community center.
About 15 minutes closer to us.
Sharon would probably know.
And they, they want to start it in 2025 and have it completed by 2028, so they're fast-tracking Barclay Sewer Plant, or Seward Project, 79% done. Churchill Hunt, which is a housing development in Churchill, it slowed down considerably, and now they just, you can build 42 more houses. Evidently, that has been sold to a different developer now. Queenstown, they're getting ready, sending, signed the DRA for the Wheatlands, that's been around for a long time, as everybody knows. And they also, the commissioner and Tom Monal also said that their budget cycle is probably going to be, going to be a tough one this year because of the current, a couple of things that are contributing to the budget, so, that's all I have.
I did have a question, just based on what you were sharing about the hazard mitigation plan, if, if council tonight would endorse an opportunity to provide a brief, it doesn't need to be, I think, an exhaustive, I mean, you've seen it, it's a book, and I help contribute to portions of that when I work for emergency services, so I love the idea, I think it'd be great if in the near future, we could maybe invite Chief Morris or Director Haas to come in from emergency services, help with just a very brief overview, and then take an action, take a vote that evening to formally decide to adopt and piggyback off of the county's plan. I think that'd be good to get in writing.
Actually, you pass it via resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be done via resolution, similar to, so we just did the, let me get the right, nuisance flooding.
Yes.
Which the county adopted, or did like the year after, so we didn't get included, and we didn't realize it. So, that will all be included this time, and, yeah, so, not, absolutely, we can invite them to come do it.
I just think that would be really good.
Yeah.
And then, I know several of us, along with department heads, have talked about, like, the top five concerns for specific geographical locations, facilities that are, you know, where our vulnerabilities really are, if it was, we don't tend to be on the eastern shore as worried about terrorism, but what we do have more of a problem in rural areas is vandalism and, you know, juvenile delinquency, and so, you know, folks trying to do stuff that they don't see the impact of could be a real headache for us with the current state of our plant and other things, so, sounds like there's consensus on that, so, thank you. Anything further?
That's it.
Councilman Keel, economic development, I have a very brief slide, I'm doing it now so that at the end of the meeting, nobody's upset with me for having so much more to cover. I'm going to do this quickly. So, I had a conversation with our finance officer, Karen Lufman, who reminded me that when we have, some of us that do have a background in economic development, myself is the designated liaison for that, will often, in conversations in the public, use a 70-30 breakdown, and the fact that many feel, as I do, that we are upside down when it comes to the differentiation between commercial versus residential tax revenues. So, Karen had said, I think you're actually way off in a bad way, and so, those are the numbers, and I just think that's worth noting, so.
If I can interject.
Yes.
The reason you want to do that, one, commercial typically has a higher assessment per square foot, so you're getting more tax dollars for the same amount of land area, and the other is, they generally are lower consumers of public services. So, it's a double win, if you will, to have more commercial, and 70-30 is sort of a targeted floor, so, yes, we are way off.
And so, I draw your attention to that, not just because it's good information itself, and I'm really thankful for Councilman Beecham here for adding that additional layer of information, but as we start to think about where we are with the replacement and expansion wastewater treatment facility, and the fact that we know that we are to believe that we have a 20-year shelf life on a plant, so, the second this thing gets built, we should be thinking about the next one. And when I look at these numbers, I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, if we don't want to debt service something, and we may be looking at some of that for the 10-odd million dollars that we still need to raise for the project that's right in front of us, but when I think about that next one, I start thinking, so should we start looking at some sort of, what is that going to cost with inflation divided by 20 years, and we're going to pass that on to our residential folks? I mean, those are options that we should start thinking about, so, not something we have to decide tonight, I just, I just put it up there, and it's something I'm going to kind of keep putting in front of us intermittently, but not just as G-was information, but with some solutions in mind. So, I also asked Karen to just share, for the sake of having it up here, 13, 30, excuse me, the public utility tax is currently $13 per $100 of assessed value, property tax currently 53.5 cents per $100 of assessed value. One of the things that we also noted was, ARPA funding needs to be obligated contracted, this was covered in our budget workshop as well, by 123124. The question that I asked of her was, do we have an opportunity for anything related to the beginning of implementing the wastewater treatment facility, that if we move on it imminently, we can obligate, contract, and then take advantage of that to maybe shave just a little bit off of that remaining balance that we have? And then, last but not least, as you all are aware, and as I will soon be really heavily promoting on Facebook and other social media, we've started this organization creed that I've mentioned, I am the liaison to that, I will continuously disclaim in the process that I have the conflict of interest of being on the council, but I'm going to help facilitate ushering in this vehicle. So, that's Centerville Reaching for Economic Development Enterprise, it's a private nonprofit organization, it has its nonprofit status through the Midshore Community Foundation, where it is a component fund, and with the understanding through Midshore Community Foundation that in the imminent future, we need to begin to obtain our own independent nonprofit status, 501(c)(3). We will have a launch on April 10th at 5:30 PM, it'll be in this room, it'll be just an hour, to leave plenty of time for the planning commission meeting that will be the follow-on at 7:00 PM that evening. Just as example of one of the projects that I believe is sort of low-hanging fruit, Jim and I, Councilman Beecham and I have discussed different grant opportunities, Tanya Wright, one of our grant writers, and I spoke, and I said, you know, Easton has recently done a walkable shopping center, I don't remember the name of the access road that is between Route 50 and the Walmart there in Easton, but if you've traveled there, you know that they have a brand-new sidewalk that goes pretty much the whole route of that road. So, I invited her to maybe look at that, and I said, this is not a drop everything, I don't know what your priorities are, and I haven't talked to the big boss yet, so don't, don't stop what you're doing. She had to answer right away how Easton did it. She had to answer right away how Easton did it. Councilman Beecham and I have talked about like the Streetscapes project, and so one of the things that I want to see us do is, we've got a walkable shopping center at Acme, we don't really have that, and I constantly, as the rest of us, and I've shared this and we've talked about it, we've got a lot of pedestrian traffic because the sidewalks are not complete on that section of 213, and so we got folks walking dangerously close to probably the fastest lane of traffic that we have coming through the town. There supposedly, as our previous town manager indicated, opportunities to tear up sidewalks as part of this, plant trees, and if we're tearing up sidewalks that we just recently had done through the Commerce and Liberty Projects, now we have an opportunity to lay fiber potentially. So it just, it just seems like there's an opportunity to maybe bake multiple solutions and opportunities into just that grant. And the last thing I'll add, I know I got kind of long on my report, is, as I shared with Councilman Beecham, he and his wife Kathy, very involved in ushering in what was our last formal economic development plan for the town. And Pat Fox, who serves on our planning commission, of course, and has an extensive background in economic development, she and I, in recent history, put together a scorecard to basically self-assess the status of completing the different suggestions that were formally made in that plan, and I will tell you, I've recently reread it, we haven't done the scoring because I really like to see somebody that's not involved in the project, as I am, to do the assessment. So when Creed launches on April 10th, one of the projects that we're going to kick off to meet in a subcommittee is to do that self-assessment, and what I will tell you is 90% of what is in that plan is still absolutely current and relevant. Would it help to have an economic development consultant say, yep, you're right about that? Yeah, and if Creed can raise the money for it, great, but in the meantime, I'm not recommending as our liaison for economic development that we go spend another 10, 20 grand on an economic development plan. So I know that was a lot of information, but I'm going to continue to kind of put thoughts together like this and share that as part of my presentation.
I wish we could say that 90% of that original plan was already accomplished.
Yes.
But that's not the case.
And on that note, there, yes, and there are, I'm glad you said that, because there are at least a couple things in there that we have done, so I'm pleased to report that we haven't, we don't have a zero compliance that's going to be coming our way, I would warn you. So I did want to encourage council to attend. Carolyn and the clerk, whoever can post something on our website, just in the event that three or more of us do attend, we're not violating any open meetings acts, and that concludes my report. Parks Advisory Board, I, did you happen to get anything from our council president to share an abstention?
But she, she did report at the last meeting, and they haven't met since the last meeting, so.
Okay, understood. The planning commission, Councilman Worth.
Last night, they continued to work on zoning map changes that are needed as a result of the comprehensive plan, and they are working on their, they're revising their bylaws. They're very close to finishing both, maybe.
Outstanding. Awesome. Anything else, just by exception for reports of boards and commissions that maybe we didn't cover? Reports of department heads, town manager and any of your staff, by exception?
Just real quick, we've been working on the budget, obviously. The council, I believe, this afternoon received an email from Carol Dags, Senior Main Street Manager, Secretary of Department of Housing and Community Development, will be here on Tuesday to do a tour, Secretary Day, and so he, our facade improvement projects are on his list to, at 10, from 10:50 to 11:20. He'll be looking at the different projects that we've had done, so Carol and I are planning on being there. We've got a property or a business owner that will speak to them, who has, he's gone through three facade improvement applications, so, for his building, and so we're looking forward to that. He is also here Monday night for dinner at Mama Mia's, so I'm not sure if anybody is interested in, I don't know if you got, did the council get?
Are we able to come to both if we want?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you want to go to the dinner Monday night, let me know, and then I can, and like, as soon as you can, and then I can let his assistant know.
And I don't know how many of you know the secretary, but in a past life, not too long ago, he was mayor of Salisbury.
That's why his name sounds so familiar, okay.
So he and I worked on a project for veterans. He started sort of a veterans' village in Salisbury, and believe it or not, we have somebody interested in looking at a tunnel-to-towers type development in Centerville for a veteran village. So it's sort of pie in the sky as an idea right now, but just interesting that he'll be coming through here. So highly encourage everybody to jump in on that if you can. All right, anything?
And then just to reiterate that, at the next meeting, April 4th meeting, we do have our Whitman Recart, our engineering firm who is working on the treatment plant, they're going to give a presentation to the council, and I just wanted, we have in our head what we are planning on presenting, but if there is anything specific that the council knew you wanted to hear about, that I want to make sure is in the presentation, just let me know.
I did run into some folks, I'll be talking about this when we do the roundtable, at an event I attended honoring our previous council president for the Plastic Free Queen Anne's County, among other things that he has been part of, and I was approached by several folks that had very specific questions, folks that represent the Corsica River Conservancy, and I said, you know what, if we're going to do this right, then why don't we, instead of rolling out this project as it's going to continue to unfold, and then await inquiries and concerns from folks, why don't we preemptively, at whatever time is appropriate, so I'm not suggesting that with this April 4th presentation, that it should be part of that necessarily or even immediately thereafter, but in the very near future, have a session that the developer can talk and preemptively answer questions that might be of concern for our waterways, things like that, because I know, based on everything I understand, I feel like we're rocking and rolling on doing things that are way ahead of the plant that we have now, obviously, so. Anyway, that would just be my footnote for that.
That's all I have.
All you have? Awesome. Thank you for all your hard work and your team, and for those that didn't participate in our budget workshop, it is yet another example of where we, as council men and women, are able to sit up here and relatively easily help make decisions for citizenry, for our town, based on the hard work that's done by our staff, so I want to acknowledge that in our regular meeting sessions, so thank you. We'll now proceed to our second citizens forum, and again, reminding our folks, we'll dispense with reading the requirement again, but we do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Anybody have anything for the public comments section?
We just opened citizens forum.
Okay, awesome. Yes, in fact, if you have a few minutes after, I wanted to chat with you. Got good news. All right. Council Roundtable, we'll start with Councilman Keel.
Last meeting, I, did we ever send a letter to stay hot with you?
I do have it on my list, yeah.
Well, I heard through, from a little birdie, that it was off the table, but now it's supposed to be done by July, so we'll see. We'll see if it gets done. That's all I have.
Councilman Beecham.
Nothing to add.
Councilman Worth.
Nothing here.
And the only thing I have, I'll be brief, I promise, in light of my long economic development report, I did have an opportunity to attend the Plastic Free Queen Anne's County event on Ken Island yesterday evening. Our previous president, Councilman Klein, was recognized for his work, not only in that initiative, but also through the Eastern Shore Land Conservancy and sort of the overall effort that he has made, and what was pointed out during that recognition was just the idea that when he was first approached by Plastic Free Queen Anne's County, that his immediate answer was, I will personally sponsor it, and I will get it passed, and they were very impressed by that level of commitment for something that arguably could not have gone the way that it did. I do want to publicly recognize our council president currently, Ashley Kaiser, who of course co-sponsored that initiative, and minus one abstention, we did pass that unanimously. So definitely something to be proud of, we did receive a plaque for that, I meant to bring it tonight, but I'll bring it to you for the, for the town hall. So we were presented with some great accolades, there'll be a nice article in the paper, and I really do believe that there are other municipalities here in our county and the county level itself that are continuing to watch what we did, and while there was a little bit of a bloodbath on social media when we first hit, hit things running on January 1st, for those that weren't paying attention, didn't know it was coming, there haven't been any revolts, there hasn't been a movement to recall the council, so I just think, you know, yeah, we did, I think we did okay on that, so anyway, that's all I have, and I didn't receive, I did text to see if Ashley had anything to add, and I didn't hear anything. So with that, unless there's any other business before the council at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, thank you.